If everyone would be called to order, I would like to open the agenda for the regularly scheduled Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 5th. Our invocation, I'm now going to ask you to stand. We're going to have a moment of silence, and then after that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, we're going to have a moment of silence. If you now would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance being led by Commissioner Judy Moose.
Attention, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
If you notice, there's a couple of seats vacant. Ryan Mayberry, I think, is out of town. Larry is going to be here about fifteen minutes late, so we decided to go ahead and start the meeting without him, and maybe we can make some progress without him. But, I'm being funny, you know. I'm sorry that they're not here. The next thing on the agenda is Commissioners' report, and does any Commissioner have any comments or reports they would like to make at this time?
I would like to report on an event that I was privileged and blessed with going to on Saturday down at the Peace Haven Baptist Church in Yadkinville. It was the welcome home for our own eight-hundred-and-eighty-second engineering company from here in Alexander County. They've been gone for ten months, various places, Kuwait, Iraq, and Afghanistan. And it was very touching. I have faith in America again from going to this thing, and I thank God that I was allowed to be there. And I am certainly proud of the people, the young men and women who were there that came home. This is what America is all about, and I have, it just, it gave me a good feeling to be there and be part of it, and I thank them for their service.
Thank you, Commissioner Moose. Commissioner Robertson, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, sir.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is adoption of agenda, and I'd like to make here a motion to adopt the agendas presented.
So moved.
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved, the agenda is adopted. The first item on the agenda is public comment period. We have several people signed up. As most of you know, we have rules and guidelines that each person has three minutes for a total of fifteen minutes for public comment. Tonight, we have six people signed up, so I understand, under those guidelines, a couple of people are going to have to be very brief in their comments, and according to County Manager Rick French, Russell, do I see you back there somewhere? You're going to be brief, are you not? And Jill, you're going to be, where do I see Jill? I saw her come in. You're going to be brief too, are you not? Okay. So hopefully, we'll stay within the fifteen-minute guideline. So the first person to, on the public comment period is Mike Anis. So Mike, he's the Commander of American Legion Post 170 here in Taylorsville. Could you introduce yourself?
Thank you. My name is Berkey Luda. My name is Mike Anis. I'm a retired Chief Master Sergeant, United States Air Force. I served forty-one years in the Air Force and met my wife, who is the County Veteran Service Officer, while we were in Afghanistan, and ended up marrying and retiring, moving back here. Now, I have the honor and privilege of being the Commander of the American Legion Post in Alexander County. And the reason I wanted to come and address you tonight is, as part of our creed and our order of battle that we do as the American Legion, we like to do public service projects, and we would like to propose one to you. We would like to fund, the American Legion would like to fund, a flagpole, full-size flagpole, for the county office building to put out front, and also create a small monument out there for all the county employees, past, present, and future, and elected officials who were, who actually served in the armed forces. And this would be no cost to the county. And so, we would like to just put that forward. Our membership has already raised the majority of the funds for it, and if we can't put one there, we're going to put one somewhere else. But we would like to do one at the county office building, because the veterans do come in and out of that building a whole, a lot, and right now, that flagpole that's on the front out there really is not acceptable. I mean, we really could do a lot better than that, and we would love to have the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to sign up is Ken Wooton, Executive Director of Dove House in Statesville.
Thank you, Berkey. My name's Ken Wooton. I'm the Executive Director for Dove House Children's Advocacy Center located in Statesville. However, we do service Iredale and Alexander County. Dove House is a child-friendly facility, provides services for those children who have alleged sexual assault. Last year in Alexander County, we had forty-five cases come through Dove House reported, and in the year before, two thousand and eleven, calendar year, we had thirty-four kids who came through and used our services. My goal tonight is really threefold, to allow you to know a little bit more about Dove House, but in the future, to bring more awareness to Alexander County. And then, thirdly, to talk about a concert that we're going to do to bring about some of this awareness on September the fourteenth. Each of you have a blue brochure in front of you, but before I get into the detail, I just wanted to let you know that Alexander County should be proud of the multidisciplinary team that we use throughout Dove House, and that multidisciplinary team consists of the DSS and Cindy Holman and her staff, the Alexander County Sheriff's Office, Chris Bowman and Detective Foster, Mill Saps, and Ben Field currently, the Taylorsville Police Chief, of course, Tony Jones, and his detective Lisa Johnson. All these people are involved. With me tonight, I have our District Attorney, and fortunate enough to have her, she serves on our board, as well as her ADA's actually prosecute all the cases that go to trial. So Sarah, thank you so much. I appreciate that. But in the brochure, on September the fourteenth, we're fortunate enough to have in Statesville, Mr. Rocky Lynn. Rocky is a country western music star, but also, he is a veteran of the U.S. Army. He has his own foundation tribute to the troops, but on September the fourteenth, I met him at a Rotary meeting. He has agreed to do a free concert, Alexander County High School Auditorium, Alexander Central High School Auditorium, and it's one of those events that you do not want to miss. Even though it's free to the public, it is, the value of that concert is huge, and he is an exceptional talent, and we're fortunate enough to bring it to Alexander County to bring more awareness about Dove House. So, thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Larry, if you will come before I announce the next person. The third person signed up is Kathy Riddle. She's representing the Citizens for the Future of Alexander County. Kathy?
As Berkey said, my name is Kathy Riddle, and I'm representing the Citizens for the Future of Alexander County, also known as CFAC. We're announcing today that we are going to conduct a public forum September twelfth. This forum is to gather input from citizens regarding the county's economic advancement. The meeting will be held here in this room, here at CVCC, at seven PM on the twelfth. We are excited about giving citizens the opportunity to come together and focus on the county's economic growth and vitality. CFAC has already identified some areas on which to concentrate, but we know the citizens of our county can provide more vital input to help everyone move forward. We've identified at least four areas of concentration. Those four areas are travel and tourism, developing retirement opportunities, revitalizing the economy, and creating a cultural arts environment. So now, we are asking for people to participate that evening by providing ideas to develop these areas, as well as other initiatives that might come out that evening. We want to do this so that we can help our county move forward. The state of North Carolina has described Alexander County as economically depressed. Our members have had an opportunity over the past two years to speak with many of the citizens who have expressed a strong interest in seeing something done to make this a better place to live, to work, and to play. And this forum will help provide an opportunity for citizens to express their ideas on how to do that. So our organization realizes that there is no reason why citizens can't work together to change the county's economy into a thriving one, noting that collaboration is a key element in making this effort successful. After all, as Margaret Mead, the famous anthropologist stated, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. In closing, please know that other forums are expected to be conducted as we go along so that efforts are developed to help improve the county's economy. So, I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you, to extend to each of you a personal invitation to participate that night, as well as all interested citizens. Please come out that night, and we'll see you here, this room, September twelfth, seven PM.
Thank you, Kathy. Next person signed up on the list is Connie Killian, the Bethlehem Community Development Association.
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to announce our Fourth Annual Bethlehem Day Festival, including a classic car and truck show. Starts on ten o'clock and goes to four PM, and we're going to have live music and entertainment, arts and crafts, children's activities, food and drinks, information booths, and fifty-fifty door prize, or prize money, excuse me, and of course, classic automobiles and trucks. Last year, we had a lot of rain, but we still had a really good turnout. We had fifty-two vendor booths, and we had a lot of people to show up. So, we're excited, and we're looking forward to some more this year. So if you would like this, I can give you one of these. This is one of our posters, and you'll be seeing them around, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Green, flooding information.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for just a minute of your time tonight. And this came up late last week in exchanging some emails with Manager French today. We felt like it was a good idea for me to come for you tonight. As most people have read in the paper, and those that haven't heard, we want them to hear, Governor McCrory has requested some federal disaster declaration for seven counties, which includes Alexander. That's primarily because Catawba County met the threshold of more than twenty-five major damaged properties. They did that, if you've seen the news tonight, as I did before I came in, over eight hundred properties have received damage as of today in Catawba County. So Alexander County, if this is granted by the Small Business Administration, Alexander County would be eligible, citizens would be eligible based on the fact that we're a contiguous county. To date, I've had one resident call my office and question this, and my message tonight is very simple: keep good records, keep photos, deal with your insurance company, and document everything. If this is awarded from Small Business Administration, that would be the first step. Citizens would be able to apply for low-interest loans to recover for renting temporary housing, for repairing and replacing permanent housing, replacing personal property, including clothes, required tools and equipment, for transportation, medical and dental expenses, funeral and burial expenses resulting from the disaster. So, there are other possibilities, but the first step is whether or not SBA grants this disaster declaration. If it does, citizens have to go through that process. In addition to that, the Governor may, at his discretion, do some individual assistance. But in any case, citizens have to go through the Small Business Administration with the application. If they're not qualified for that, there may be other options. But again, my message, good documentation, keep it, and hopefully, in the next few days, we'll hear if this has come about, and I'm sure they're going to set up one or two offices in Catawba County to work through with SBA. That's the first message. My second one, because I still have just a second. In the next two months, we've got three fire departments that'll be going through some ISO ratings, so you're going to see some firemen out flowing hydrants, tankering some water, and that is all an attempt to lower the insurance rating in Basta, Sugarloaf, and maintain the rating in the title of the community. So those guys are out there working hard, and we always got to thank our volunteers for what they do. So, we're doing those rating reviews over the next two months.
Thank you, Russell.
Make sure they notify the water systems before they start flowing.
We have. We've set up a system where they call our office, and we call the water system and make sure they know that we're going to be flowing those hydrants. We have a couple of issues. We've dealt with some poultry growers. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Russell. Last on the sign-up list is Jill Woody, and talking about the Stony Point and Bethlehem Senior Centers.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here tonight. I just wanted to let you know that we have opened a third center. We now have one not only in Taylorsville, but in Bethlehem and in Stony Point. The one in Stony Point opened the eighth of July, and while it's slow down there, it is seeming to pick up. We had a program this morning by the Sheriff's Department and had eleven people attend that program. So it is, we are reaching out, we've had, in this last month, we had eleven Stony Point people who had never been to a senior center location anywhere. We also have the Bethlehem Center that is open on Tuesdays and Thursdays, which seems to be doing very well over there. I wanted to make everyone aware that I've been working with the school administration and with the Alexander Central High School Athletic Department, and because the Tar Heel Card was discontinued last year, we have now come up with our own Alexander County sixty-plus card that is going to be accepted at all the home games, except for state playoffs and for endowment games. Anyone who is sixty or older and is an Alexander County resident may come by the senior center any three, any of the three locations, and pick up a card. They will need photo ID. And if anybody has any questions about any of our centers or any of the activities that are going on there, they can call the center, six-three-two-one-seven-one-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
You just made it.
Really? We're now going to the regular agenda after we've done the public comment period, and item number two on the regular meeting agenda is a resolution in support of a Veterans Outpatient Clinic in Wilkes County, and I recognize Ginger Anis, who is the county's Veteran Service Officer.
Thank you. Wilkes County Veteran Service Officer Ralph Brollhill has been coordinating the request to open a VA outpatient clinic in Wilkes County. This is to better serve the surrounding counties of Wilkes, as well as to open up the VA health care system to more veterans. Wilkes Regional Medical Center has agreed to supply the facility for a dollar a year to the VA. The VA just has to put the staff in there to run it. Currently, there's approximately two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three veterans in Alexander County. The bordering counties are Caldwell, Wilkes, Iredale, and Catawba, and you can see on the slide up there the number of veterans that are in those counties as well. The total is about thirty-seven thousand six hundred and four veterans, and that's about the total number of people in Alexander County itself, so that'll give you an idea of the numbers. It's not to take away from any of the clinics that are already open and established, it's just to make VA health care more accessible to rural counties, to folks that have to wait a long time to get an appointment. For most people in this area, most of my veterans that are just starting into the system, it takes anywhere from two months to sometimes longer to get the first appointment. Once they get in, it's maybe a little bit easier, but for some of the specialties, they still have to wait months. So hopefully, this would help change some of that. We have a petition that's been going around. I've distributed it to all the veteran service organizations here in the county. I've got one outside my office door, I've got one inside my office, on my desk, and when the veterans come in, I talk to them about it, and so far, most everybody's been more than willing to sign the petition. I would just appreciate your consideration for the voting for the resolution in favor of the additional clinic in Wilkes County.
Junior, I have a question, and I've heard this.
Okay.
There is a Veteran Service Clinic in Catawba County.
Yes.
But it's quite busy, is that not the case?
Yes, yes, and that's the problem. It is open. Everybody, like I say, once they get there, they love it. They don't want to move, you know, the doctors are really good there, but it's just being able to get an appointment in a timely manner, because some of these folks, some of the diseases that they have, they really don't need to be waiting.
So they're backed up on the amount of patients they can see?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Do you have any idea how, you said about two months for somebody who's going first time, how will, how much will this reduce that wait time? Do you have any idea?
Well, I guess it will depend on how big the clinic, how much staff the VA can come up with to staff the clinic. The biggest thing will probably be getting the providers that are available. I don't know what the process is for the VA's hiring practices and those kinds of things, but hopefully, probably to start with, it may not help really fast, but it may. It's just kind of hard to tell.
And the reason I asked the question was not to put you on the spot, but it's a disgrace the way our veterans have to wait for treatment, especially as they get older, and the distances they have to drive to get those evaluations.
Right. And a lot of the health, depending on the income situation, because VA health care is income-based, like a lot of the programs that the VA sponsors, if they don't get reimbursed for mileage, then that's money out of their pocket that they don't get back, so that makes a difference too.
And Commissioner Robertson, it, I think, needs some information. I can share, I asked Ms. Anis this question prior to her coming here tonight. Why don't we have the clinic placed in Alexander County? And what was the answer to that question?
We don't have a health care facility that could staff a clinic adequately for the VA.
And Wilkes County is also providing the facility for one dollar a year.
One dollar a year, and they already have an open hospital that's open, running, and, you know.
And Iredale County does not have a facility at this time?
Iredale does not. The VA in Salisbury, of course, which I've heard nightmares about the wait time once you have an appointment there to go sit and wait for your appointment to happen. Winston-Salem has an outpatient, Charlotte has an outpatient, I think there's one in Rutherfordton. I looked at my list, I didn't write all those down before I came. So there are some out there, some are, of course, probably larger than others, but this would actually not only help Alexander and our surrounding counties, but especially the mountain counties of North Carolina, because a lot of those have to go to Mountain City, Tennessee, to get treatment. And, you know, if they have to go in the wintertime or something like that, I'm sure those roads are not really conducive to safe travel, so.
Any other questions? Judy?
Is there not one in Asheville?
Yes, there is, there is.
Okay.
But that's still quite a drive for...
I know, it is.
For folks.
Commissioner Yoder, you have any questions? Okay. I'd like to read the resolution in support of Veterans Outpatient Clinic in Wilkes County. Whereas our veterans have answered their country's call to duty, serving bravely and nobly, and in most cases, without fanfare or acclaim, and whereas our veterans have personified the virtues of patriotism, service, duty, courage, and sacrifice, and whereas all Americans recognize the service and sacrifices made by these veterans and their families, and whereas our veterans deserve to be able to access care at a veteran outpatient clinic in a timely manner, no matter where they live, and whereas approximately forty-three-thousand four hundred and ninety-one veterans live in Wilkes County and the nine surrounding counties, as we saw on the chart, and whereas travel is a problem in the rural areas for a great many of the veterans who need to get into the health care system, and whereas the Board of Trustees at Wilkes Regional Medical Center has offered space at no cost to the Veterans Administration to house a veteran outpatient clinic in Wilkes County. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby supports Wilkes County's efforts for a veterans outpatient clinic in Wilkes County and urges the Veterans Administration to utilize the space being offered. I would ask for any more questions?
Moved to approve the resolution.
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. The resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. And can I say one other thing?
Sure.
I'm coming up on my two-year anniversary as the Veteran Service Officer, and I'd just like to thank the veterans of Alexander County for being patient with me during my transition to a different job, and I'd also like to thank Mr. French and the county commissioners for all the support that the Veteran Services gets. Thank you.
Thank you. I will offer this comment, I have not heard, as Chairman of the Commission, one negative comment about the service you provide for Ken, so I just want to commend you on the service that you do provide.
And I tend to pick up your cards and give them out to veterans on the eastern end of the county.
The third item on the agenda is information concerning the Y-Ride and the Hidnite Festival Road Race, County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday, August twenty-fourth, at nine o'clock, the Third Annual, what we call the Y-Ride, will start at Rocky Face Park. It'll also end at Rocky Face Park. It's not a bike race, it's a bike ride to enjoy beautiful Alexander County. We offer a hundred K ride, a fifty K ride, and a fifteen K ride, which is around sixty miles, thirty miles, and ten miles. So, the last couple of years, we've had beautiful weather. One day, one of the Saturdays is rather hot, and we work pretty hard providing water to bike riders, but it's a great day to enjoy Alexander County. Information is on our webpage, and you see the information that Chad has listed before you. We, of course, need volunteers for lots of different things: traffic control, water stations, race registration. Information about this, if you'll call six-three-two-nine-three-three-two, that's the Alexander County Office, and ask for Judy Feimster, and we will get you signed up, and we would like to have folks there and enjoy the day on Saturday. It's a great day, and again, this is our third bike ride that we've had. It started in two thousand and eleven. On September twenty-eighth, we have the Seventh Annual Hidnite Festival Road Race. We have a half marathon, ten K and five K. We have, the race started in two thousand and seven. Over the years, we've had over four hundred runners participate in all our events. In two thousand and twelve, last year, we moved our race to Rocky Face Park, and we had a five- and ten-mile trail run, but this year, we're back on the pavement. But this year, we're back on the pavement with the two thousand and thirteen Hidnite Festival Road Race. The race, the half marathon, which is thirteen point one miles, starts at Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. The ten K starts at the end of Allen Road. And the five K, which is new this year, starts on York Institute Road. All those races start at the same time and follow the same course, and finish at the Lucas Mansion, which is part of the Hidnite Festival. It's really a cool thing, if you've ever seen it. It's neat the way they finish with the people there. We urge people to sign up now. We're very excited about it, but like the bike ride, we need volunteers. These events won't happen unless we have volunteers to help us. So again, the Y-Ride is Saturday, August twenty-fourth, and the Hidnite Festival Road Race is Saturday, September twenty-eighth. And for more information, if you'd contact the county office at six-three-two-nine-three-three-two and ask for me. I'll be glad to tell you all about it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. French. The next item on the agenda is the sales tax report, and I'm going to, again, turn it over to County Manager Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Sales tax report for eleven months. Through eleven months, we have collected or received three million three hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That's ninety-two point three-nine percent of what we budgeted. And again, this is for two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget, because the sales tax dollars come in to the county two months, run two months behind. Last year, at the same time, we had collected three million two hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars, which is, that's fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars more, or one point eight percent higher. But the hold harmless set aside for school construction and debt service is eighty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, that's the story. We're running pretty close on the budgeted number, and we'll have a report next month for the total for the full year. So that's for eleven months, it's three point three million dollars. Be glad to answer any questions.
Can the Commissioners have any questions? Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, again, I'm going to turn it over to County Manager Rick French as board appointments and reappointments, the Senior Center Advisory Committee, and Animal Control Board Advisory Board.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Appointments for the Senior Center Advisory Committee. Appoint Bonnie Sims, Phyllis Douglas, Paulette Huffman for three years. Reappoint Alfred Dooley for three years. Animal Control Advisory Board, reappoint Gary Schaefer, Dwight Shook, Todd Jones, Wilson Friday, Lanny Keever, James Hill, and Dottie Ferguson, all for two years.
Move to approve as presented.
If you have a second?
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. The appointments have been approved. Number six is other business, the County Manager's report. County Manager Rick French, again.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of things to mention. One is our next meeting is scheduled for August nineteenth at six o'clock here, and that on August twenty-second, the One Hundred and Sixth Annual NCACC, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference will be held in Guilford County. And Vice Chairman Larry Yoder and I will be attending. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, excuse me, consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
If you have a second?
I second it.
It's been made in second. All in favor? Raise your right hand. It's been approved. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. We're going to adjourn to a closed session according to North Carolina General Statute one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight dot eleven, parentheses A, parentheses one, comma two, comma four, comma five, and six, to prevent disclosure of confidential information, degrees, prizes, or awards, economic development, contractual, and personnel. So, meeting is adjourned, and we move into closed session.
Take a vote on that.
Yes. Let's do a vote. All in favor?